Okay, I'll take a look at that. Thank you so much. That's great. You offered and I said, oh my gosh, now I need them. Thank you.
Happy to do it.
We all said April?
Almost.
Oh, okay.
Takes me, the Facebook takes a second, sorry. All right, Mrs. Thomas, we're all set.
I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:31. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
There are no adjustments to the agenda, Mrs. Thomas.
Thank you. Item D is approval of minutes, and I don't believe we have any to approve right now. Item E, communications and correspondence.
I have none, Mrs. Thomas.
Item F, public participation. Any public comments can be made through the question and answer block in Zoom or by sending an email to the Elsworth School Board Vice Chairman, Paul Marcosian, at pmarcosian@elswhoreschools.org. Moving right along. Committee reports. Well, the Finance Committee has met a couple of times since meeting, and that will come up later in our, in this particular meeting, so. Item H, all business. Item I, new business, consideration and approval of the FY21 budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. I would say that's my cue. Board members, I hope you all received the information this afternoon. It was hot off the presses and completely up to date. But if I could just take a couple of minutes to talk about the budget preparation process and how we got to the point we are this evening. If you'd consider this, again, much of what you're about to hear is what was discussed in the workshop last Thursday, and some of us discussed at your previous meeting on April 14th. But with this being said, each year preparation of the Elsworth School Department budget adheres to several specific guidelines. Excuse me. One is to adequately and appropriately fund public education for our students that are responsible to taxpayers, to maintain consistency with the Elsworth School Department vision and mission, and to support ongoing efforts to continue to improve all aspects of school department programming. Ultimately, we continue to strive to be the best system in the state of Maine, one that provides an outstanding and comprehensive academic and co and extracurricular experience for all students, and plays an integral role in the continued growth and development of the city of Elsworth. We continue to provide programs through our budgets that are high quality, attractive options for families of school choice who are considering relocating to the Elsworth area and contribute to the economic and workforce development in our area. And we seek to adopt a budget that meets with the support of our board, our council, and all of our community members. Since we initiated the budget preparation process back in November, we've worked diligently to craft a budget that's consistent with our guiding principles, addresses specific needs in terms of increased staffing, transportation, facilities maintenance plans, including ongoing enhancements for the safety and the physical, social, emotional health of our students and staff, and that is fiscally responsible. This year, as we've never had to submit a virus to our city, state, nation, and certainly the world, has changed all of our lives, introduced many realities that none of us could have ever anticipated. The impact of the virus knows no boundaries and is widespread. Fiscally, we're dealing not only with the current challenges that all of us are facing personally in our families, in our lives, in our business, but also face uncertainty, not just for the FY21 budget cycle, but likely for the FY22 and FY23 budget cycles. Based on the most recent information we received from the Department of Education in a meeting with Commissioner Macon, we expect to receive subsidy for the balance of the current school year. So other than placing a spending slowdown and freeze on any unnecessary expenditures for the balance of the year, we're in a position to complete the current fiscal year as planned. However, given the projected difficult fiscal future, the board's Finance Committee and I recommended that we craft an FY21 budget for the school department that results in no increase to the local appropriation as compared to the local appropriation for FY20. Based on the discussion in last Thursday's April 24th workshop, although there was no formal vote, the discussion of board members appeared that there's consensus that supports the recommendation to bring a budget in at that level. It's important to know that achieving a budget with no increase to the local appropriation is not a simple task. While there are many difficult decisions that are based on priorities were made to arrive at that objective, and the final budget presented here this evening will adequately and appropriately fund our educational programs while being fiscally responsible. As the fiscal outlook for the next budget cycle is projected to be difficult, proposing a budget with no additional burden to our taxpayers is the absolute right decision. While this final draft and formal proposal reflects a number of identified needs in terms of staffing and facilities infrastructure that are not included, we're confident that the budget as presented will meet our prioritized needs as adjusted for the FY21 budget, reflect our vision and mission, conform to our guiding principles, and meet with the support of the council and Elsworth citizens. And what I'd like to do at this point in time is provide a general overview of the proposed expenditure and projected revenue side of the budget. The budget that you have before you this evening, on the expenditure side, represents a budget of $23,979.42, which is an increase of $431,142.2, or 1.91%. Looking down at the revenue section of the summary document I provided to you, we see that the local appropriation is $11,660,244.84, which is a reduction of $3,306.20 in the local appropriation as compared to this year. So we have certainly met the objective of bringing in a budget that does not produce an additional local burden on our taxpayers. Question is, what is included in that budget? Generally speaking, this is a budget that maintains our current level of programming and services. As you know from previous versions, the previous discussions of our budget, there were a number of initiatives and a number of programs that we were seeking to to add and increase to support our vision and mission and move our school department forward. What we have in this budget is as follows. In regular instruction, which is your pre-K through 12, regular instruction, we see an increase of $211,255 or 3.26%. The primary drivers here are wages and health insurance. For three years in a row, we had a 0% increase in our health insurance premiums. Unfortunately, this year, we didn't reach a fourth year in a row. We had a 6% increase, so that is part of the increase. The other thing, it's important for board members and community members and our city council to know is that this is a negotiations year for two of our bargaining units. And we are bound by a state law that mandates teacher salaries be increased to a minimum of $40,000 over the next three years and by minimum wage laws. We're also bound by being able to be competitive with neighboring school districts in terms of wages. It's also important for people to know that this past school year, and this is because of lack of candidates, we had several teaching and ed tech positions that remained unfilled. Under special education, you'll see a significant increase there of 11.44% of $425,739. In addition to the negotiations and insurance factor, this cost center includes $335 in funding to cover six new ed tech three positions, and those are required positions to meet identified student needs. And the equivalent of one administrative assistant position, whose primary function will be to reduce the exorbitant paperwork burden that's placed upon our special education teachers. Before we knew we were going to need six additional ed techs, we knew that we needed to provide additional support because of our special ed numbers. The fact that we have six new ed techs means that we have increased numbers of students in that program, so the administrative assistance support will be absolutely necessary. Career and technical education, we're showing a decrease of 8.27% or $155,552. This reduction is due to the decision to eliminate one teaching position due to low enrollment and to suspend for a year the proposed new cybersecurity program and construction that was going along to renovate the facility to support that program. We are still proposing to add the new hospitality program, but I want to stress that the only reason we are doing that is because the funding we are receiving through the Department of Education to support a new program exceeds the cost of the program. Were we to reduce the program and also reduce the subsidy we were to receive to support the program, we would end up increasing the local appropriation. But again, that's a significant decrease in career and technical education. Other instruction, which includes summer school and after-school programming, co and extracurricular programming, shows a decrease of 1.39% or $9,800. What we're looking at there is foregoing the purchase of some pieces of equipment to a subsequent year. Student staff services. This is a cost center that includes multiple different areas. What it includes is school health, which is our school nurse's office, a guidance and social work program, curriculum instruction and assessment, library media centers, instructional staff training, which encompasses professional development and support for our staff, and instructional technology. All of those categories together show an increase of $120,419 or 6.3%. Included in that increase is $58,000 to support necessary training and development of the staff. And I would add to clarify that, that we have a number of staff who have joined us over the past couple of years who have enrolled in advanced degree programs. And along with advanced degree programs requires them to take a number of courses. Also including the increase is the equivalent of a halftime FTE supporting, will be assumed district-wide student registration through Infinite Campus and work on data quality. And it's important that we have that position because those tasks relate directly to funding that we receive from the Department of Education. System administration, which includes the school board, superintendent's office and the business office, shows an increase of 28,000 or 5%. Included in that are wages and insurance, and that's health insurance and liability insurance at the district purchases, an increase in legal and audit services, and an increase in software maintenance for software programs that support our business offices' functions. Building administration, which is our principals' offices at EEMS and EHS, shows an increase of $81,900 or 9.6%. While that sounds high, it really isn't. Included in that increase are funds to support wages and insurance for a new K through four principal. Again, the principal that we have now, Mrs. Lewis, believe it or not, works four days a week. And we budgeted for that last year. We're budgeting for a principal that's been working five days a week. Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. We appreciate that. That's a significant portion when you look at the increase in salary and benefits. And it's also the year of our decennial high school accreditation visit. So that accounts for the bulk of that increase in building administration. Facilities and maintenance, and I want to credit the facilities director Chuck Turnbull. We're showing a decrease of 4.7% or $118,000. To reach this reduction, we have deferred a number of maintenance projects based upon a priority basis consistent with the facilities plan that Mr. Turnbull has put together. We've also reduced the final upgrade to our maintenance fleet and deferred the replacement of some equipment for his staff. The reason that we're able to do this is because over the past three years, we've made significant progress through our facilities plan in updating some of our maintenance needs. Transportation shows an increase of 5.3% or $51,700. Included in that increase are funds to support a new driver for our handicap bus and a number of changes to health insurance selections for our staff members. Food service and adult education. With food service, although this is an area where we've updated our wage scale to comply with minimum wage laws through Mr. Daley's budgeting and available fund balance usage, we're showing a decrease of $14,661 in the amount of funds we'll be requesting from the city to support the operation of that program. Adult education. We reduce the replacement purchase of technology, reduce training and development costs, defer the addition of necessary classroom space until February of 2021. And in addition to reducing those items and reducing the amount of fund balance necessary to support this budget, we will require no additional funds from the city to support operation of this program. So in terms of the expenditure side, that's how we got to the level that we are this evening. On the revenue side, as you all know, funds to support the school department budget come from a number of sources. One is state support in the form of subsidy allocations and debt service reimbursement, tuition revenues from communities who pay for their residents who choose to attend Elsworth High School and Elsworth Elementary and Middle School, and local citizen support through property taxes. The main Department of Education distributed its most recent version of the ED279 funding documents on March 27th. Governor Mills proposed an education budget that had an increase of $85 million for FY21 into the funding model, which is a model based on a combination of enrollment, fiscal capacity, which is valuation, and past expenditures. With a projected increase in state funding for education, the formula of the mill rate applied to the city valuation to determine the required local contributions was reduced from 8.28 to 8.18 mills, resulting in a decrease of $7,700 in the amount the city of Elsworth is required to raise in order to receive full subsidy. Additionally, we'll see an increase of go to a different document here. Because we're not seeing an increase of $4 million. It would be nice if we were. We are seeing an increase in state subsidy of $135,589.46. And the state also provides fiscal support for career and technical education programs. As a result of the increased state support of education overall and their support for a new program, we're projected to receive $1.655 million in CTE subsidy, which is an increase of $158,371.36 from the subsidy level for this year. $70,000 of that increase come to support the new hospitality program. We're also projecting an increase of $67,661.78 in tuition revenues for our regular and special education students. The other piece that we talked about at the workshop last Thursday is the fact that we have updated our available undesignated fund balances and reserve lines. Now, it's important for people to know that when we're looking at the fund balance, we manage our fund balance, which is the amount of money that's left over after you complete the year in terms of your revenues and your expenditures that is available for use in subsequent years. Since we withdrew from RSHU 24 back in 2014, we've been managing that fund balance over a multi-year approach. You can't manage it on a one-year approach because you'll end up with ebbs and flows in your budget. And we've done a good job in keeping that relatively consistent. Now, as a result of the closure of our schools to instruction because of the COVID virus this year, we're seeing a resultant less expenditures than projected in the areas of unfilled positions, unpaid expenses for co and curricular activities for the spring seasons, decreased costs in electricity and heating oil, reductions in transportation fuel costs in other areas. We're projecting to have a healthier-than-usual balance of funds from the current year to add to fund balances from our audit figures in June 30th of 2019. We're proposing to use those funds in a variety of different ways. One is to offset expenditures for the FY21 budget. Another is to put some funds into a reserve account that will be available for subsequent year funding challenges or anticipated shortfalls that may occur in the next fiscal year, such as a curtailment of subsidy, which is a possibility. We're also seeking to transfer the unused portion of the CTE capital reserve, which was put into reserve for the roof project last summer, into the minor capital projects reserve, which is about $22,200, and to transfer from undesigned fund balance an amount of $77,758 to minor capital reserve to support the Delu Stadium lighting project. So with that being said, what we're looking at on the revenue side of the equation for this budget is using a fund balance of $1.27 million, which is an increase of $420,000 over last year, to offset expenditures. We're looking at using $70,803 from this career and technical education fund balance to offset expenditures. We have seen an increase in miscellaneous revenue of $255,000, which is a $35,000 increase, which is reflective of an increase in state agency client revenues to support this budget. When we factor in all of those revenues, what we're seeing is local appropriation of $11,660,244.84, which is a decrease of $3,300 to our taxpayers. Utilizing our fund balances in this manner is consistent with how we've managed funds since it was brought from our school system in RSHU 24. We look at the balance as a means of offsetting proposed expenditures to be available for anticipated contingencies and as a means of creating appropriate and necessary reserve accounts. As I said a few minutes ago, it's important to know we manage these funds not for a single year, but over the longer term. The fact that we are proposing putting some money into a reserve for the next year is critical because moving forward, the fiscal future of our state and nation is uncertain. So in closing with the budget, while it was a challenge to reduce our proposal to this level, and there were a lot of difficult decisions, some of the new positions that we had in the proposal had to be removed. We've reduced the amount of funds to support a variety of activities, including professional development. Given the current and projected fiscal climate and the uncertainty of funding in subsequent years, it's the prudent and fiscally responsible action to take. Would entertain any questions from members of the board? No questions?
No questions. Paul, do you have any public comment questions?
I do have a question, Dan, when Paul's ready.
I think he's frozen.
I think he might be, but I didn't want to.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself.
Okay.
Still getting used to all this. All right, so I have, there's one comment from Dale Hamilton. That's the only question or comment I've received so far. Dale writes, "In light of the arbitrary criteria imposed by the governor to determine what we can and cannot do, in particular, the restriction on no more than 50 people in a gathering, I would like to suggest an alternative that will allow the senior class to have a graduation. Since the governor has allowed drive-in theaters to operate, I would like to suggest that we use the Bangor Drive-In Theater to hold our graduation. While there are details to work out, it would allow for a modified graduation. I would ask that we assemble a work group of parents to work with the administration on this topic."
I think that's a great question. I'll take a shot at it. And Mr. Clifford, if you'd like to weigh in afterwards, you certainly may. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. A couple of things. One, our administrators are looking at options for holding a graduation ceremony, not just for our high school graduates, but also for our CTE graduates, our eighth grade students who are going to promote to the ninth grade and also adult education. But your question is focused on Elsworth High. Certainly, that may be an option to use the Bangor Drive-In, and there would be a lot of details. But our administrators right now are working on a number of things. One is, given the current restrictions, how we can provide an alternative, most likely a virtual graduation, to publicly recognize the accomplishments of our graduating seniors that can be shared by parents, by our staff members, and by all community members. But also to look at if those restrictions are eased, either postponing or doing some sort of a more physical-based activity. So those plans are certainly in the works. And appreciate the offer to volunteer, Mr. Hamilton. I've had a couple of other parents reach out offering the same thing. I think as we move forward, that may be something that we would be able to take parents up on. But rest assured that we value these traditional ceremonies for our students and our community. And looking at all different alternatives to find a way to make sure that they happen. But also mention that we have a couple of local media organizations who have reached out to us wanting to help in providing opportunities. One last thing before I turn it over to you, Mr. Clifford. One of the things that we received in a communication from the Commission of Education today was that with Governor Mills' press conference this afternoon, the same restrictions on schools are still in place that were made in their very strong recommendation of April 7th. So whether they would allow a school to do something like that or not, I don't know. Mr. Clifford, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I mean, myself, along with a lot of other parents and people in education, we're kind of hoping for different information from Governor Mills today, but I completely understand the decision. You know, this does throw out some options that we were looking at for graduation. You know, and I'll be in contact with some parents that have talked to me and did a group together and planned something that is going to be fair and exciting for the kids and special for the kids. And, you know, do the best we can with the opportunity that we have. But like I said, I was disappointed with the information today, but completely understand it. And, you know, I was just thinking of the kids and, you know, how we can celebrate them. And so, you know, now we know more than 50 can assemble, and we'll make plans around that.
Thank you. Do you have another, Paul, or?
I have not received any other questions at this point.
Are there any questions from the board, members on the budget?
I did have a quick question. About, and this may have been covered prior, I just can't remember, about what amount is typically the fund's balance? Like, in a rough sense. I know we're bringing forward a lot more, and that's obviously in consideration for, like you said, more than one fiscal year, possibly.
That's a good question, Jen. You know, certainly, the reason that we're bringing forth more this year is because of the closure. And again, you asked that question in the workshop the other night. There are a number of things that we're not expanding funds on. But I think if you look at it from the longer perspective, back the year that Elsworth withdrew from RSHU 24, the initial budget that was put together included $1.2 million of fund balance to offset proposed expenditures, which is higher than you would normally have in a budget of $19 or $20 million, but that was the amount we had. We have tried over the past four or five years to reduce that amount down to a $6,000 or $7,000 level, because that's closer to 3% of your gross budget. But one of the challenges, and this is why I mentioned that this is a multi-year process rather than just a one-year process, if you use too high a level of fund balance in one year and deplete that available fund balance for subsequent years, what you run the danger of doing is not having enough to offset expenditures for a subsequent year. So for example, if we decided to put $1.8 million in this budget for next year, we would be starting off next year with a fund balance that's $440,000 less, which would mean less available. So if we didn't have a fund balance of $1.8 million next year, we're starting out in a position where we're either going to have to find new revenues or make more significant production. It's kind of been a long, five or six-year process, and we were making progress on it until this year.
Right.
And I guess if you look for silver linings in terms of budgeting, the fact that we've closed down and we know that we're going to have difficulty years over the next couple of years, the fact that we have additional funds to put towards fund balance for next year and also into reserve for a subsequent year is hopefully going to help us. I'm not sure that answered your question, but I hope it did.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
I don't have a question, Dan. I just had a couple of comments to make. I served on the Finance Committee with Ms. Thomas. And I just want to say that to thank all the building administrators and the department heads that presented their budgets. I feel it's very thoughtful, very responsible, and I appreciate your input and the very hard work that went into getting us where we are today. and the very hard work that went into getting us where we are today. Thank you very much.
I'll just make a comment also. I know that this process has been difficult. There's there've been disappointments because of things that we wanted to have in the budget and realistically thought we would be able to include. And we've ended up having to cut some of those things, and I know that, like I said, it's disappointing, but given the circumstances we're in, it's a hard reality that we have to swallow. And hopefully, next year, we'll be in a better place.
While the board is entertaining, whether they want to make a motion or not, I'd like to echo what Mr. Hudson said and thank all of our administrators and staff for the hard work they've done, not just in crafting what was a really nice budget prior to COVID coming about, but in doing all the hard work to get us to the point where we are now. A lot of difficult decisions, a lot of things that we didn't want to do. But as we've said on many occasions, we're very fortunate to have the staff that we do in this school department that are going to do the right things. They want to do the right things for kids, and they always do that. But they also understand that sometimes in doing that, you need to make difficult decisions, and they were able to do that here. But I do appreciate that, and thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Hudson.
Mrs. Thomas, I'm ready to make the motion when you're ready.
There's one more.
We're ready, I think.
Are there any more questions? Are we ready?
There is a question.
Ready.
On the Q and A, there's a question. I don't know if Paul can see it or not, but.
Yep, yeah, I can see it. Okay, so this just came in from Beth Alteri. It says, "I may have missed this, but is that increase figuring in the surplus, or is that without it?"
Sorry about that. I hope I'm interpreting the question properly, but in terms of the overall budget, the surplus is factored into what the ultimate local appropriation is. There is an increase in expenditures to the tune of about 1.91%. And again, that's to maintain the level of services and make a couple of minor additions. Where we're able to get down to a point where we have a decrease, minor decrease in local appropriation is through the use of that surplus and our other revenues. So I think the answer to Mrs. Alteri's question is yes, it is factoring in the surplus.
I just think it's important to remind our people, too, that, you know, we're looking at a budget that is as slimmed down as it possibly could be to be as considerate as we possibly could be to, you know, taking funds from our taxpayers. But things don't get cheaper. Everything we buy, everything we need, just because we're in a crisis doesn't mean that when we purchase it next year, it's going to be less money. We're making do with the same money, and we're going to need to make that money go farther because things are going to cost more money. So it's quite commendable.
Next year, this is the last year that we have to pay the city back for the money that we took getting out of the R S U, so there'll be a little extra money there. I think one of the things that people have to remember is that we are locked into a base salary of $40,000, so that those increases will be there also. I thought it was a very smart move and a thoughtful move to want to have 0% increase. And I recognize that things are not going to get any cheaper. However, this isn't the year to start adding. If we can keep it at a level, on the level, I think this is the year to do it and then add a little bit each year. We don't, we cannot forecast what next year is going to be or the year after. We want to make sure that we don't have to haul all the way back next year or the and lose services next year. If we can stay where we are right now for this year and next year and maybe add, you know, we don't know what's coming, and that's part of the issue.
I think, Mrs. Thomas, that's well stated. I would also add, you know, that we're very fortunate to have a community that has supported our schools over the years. They've been responsible and supportive of the things that we've asked for. I think by doing our part and taking the approach that you just described, I think it's the appropriate thing to do and the right thing to do for our community.
Anyone else?
Theoretically, you're supposed to have a second before you have discussion, but that's okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Ellsworth School Department FY '21 budget and authorization to submit to City Council as presented.
I can second that motion.
Discussion.
Was that Mrs. Miller that seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing none. We have to do the vote by roll call, so Jen Alexander.
Yes.
Abby Miller.
Yes.
Rob Hudson.
Yes, ma'am.
Paul Markosian.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Five oh.
Thank you, folks, and on behalf of the staff and the community, thank you very much.
I, too, on our agenda, consideration and approval of remote learning plan for 2019, 2020.
And Mrs. Thomas, I guess I would ask you as the chair, how would you like to proceed? I know you as a board had an excellent workshop last Thursday, where our administrators did an outstanding job of presenting the plan. Would you like a brief summary of it? Again, I don't think we need to go through the entire presentation, but would you like a brief summary of it?
I think that would be nice, so that everyone can hear the summary.
I'll just, I'll take a shot at it and run through. What the board is considering this evening is the Extended Closure Remote Learning Plan, which is required by the Department of Education. With this plan being approved by the board, allow a waiver of student instructional days, but not staff workdays, and allow us to craft an appropriate program for the balance of the school year for our students. The plan that was crafted by a lot of work with our administrators and their teachers includes several areas. One is student learning, where it talks about time expectations, attendance, what the learning resources are, and addresses technology and instructional standards for each of our grade levels. There's also a section that includes reporting on student work, where it talks specifically about what types of assessment is going to be done when you look at grades K through four for the final trimester. Reporting to parents and students is going to be through the form of a narrative of student's performance. And also the elementary and middle school is going to be following a very similar path with regard to grading. With regard to parents who are asking the question or have concerns about whether or not their students are going to be passed on to the next grade or not, an inherent portion of this plan is that students are not going to be penalized or held responsible for circumstances that are out of their control with regard to the COVID situation. So students who were not yet under consideration for retention prior to the COVID are not going to be retained as a result of it. At Ellsworth High School and H C T C, grading will remain the same for the fourth ranking period as it did for the first three ranking periods. One of the things that was adjusted over this work on the remote plan is, initially, when we started this out back in March with the initial school closure, the intent was to continue to use jump rope and record all student work as it was turned in in jump rope, but not to record work if it wasn't turned in. One of the things that transpired over the first several weeks of that model was that if a student didn't turn in an assignment, there was no grade reported. So in jump rope, it appeared as our grades were inflated. So if Dan Higgins had five assignments due, turned in three of them and had a 3.2 on those three assignments, but hadn't turned in his other assignments under the previous model, it would have been a grade of 3.2 that did not reflect his missed assignments. What's being changed now, and we, Mrs. Bowles and Mr. Clifford, are going to send out communication to parents and students tomorrow, clarifying this, that those grades are going to be reported with a 1, which is equivalent to a 55. The reason that's important is so that students understand that there is still work that they need to complete for the balance of the school year. Special education, there's a component of special education where progress reports will put a narrative detailing what the student is performing based upon parent-teacher communication. And our adult education program, those programs are proficiency-based, and assessment varies on the particular activity and purpose, and they're always individualized. The plan also includes a section that talks about student and family supports. That's the response to intervention for students that are in need. Also, it talks about how our teachers and administrators work through a variety of ways to maintain contact and communication with parents and students. One of the things that I'm hearing from a lot of parents is that that communication has been very strong and very solid. But the plan also includes a section with regard to special education, the I E P process, and even though it's not special education, the Section 504 process in terms of how meetings are held, how the I E P is being carried out, and how meetings are taken care of. There's also a section in the plan that talks about the level of social and emotional support that our clinical and guidance staff are available to provide to our students and staff. It also includes Ellsworth Adult Education, which means regular contact with their learners and also provide those types of supports. The plan also includes, even though it's not required, what we're doing for nutritional support. Our intent is to continue to provide food services through our two programs, the Department of Education Pickup Program, which is through Ellsworth High School, and the Donated Food Delivery Program, which is going to continue so long as we are able to maintain a certain level of donated foods. And I can tell you of the generosity we've seen over the past week, we're going to be able to continue that for at least three or four more weeks. There's also a section in communication that when parents see this plan, it specifically provides information on how they can contact the people they need to contact. And I would say publicly, if you have a question on your child's specific program, start with your classroom teacher and then proceed to your administrator. There is a section in here that talks about employee expectations and support. Once school closure took place back in March, Governor Mills issued an executive order that all staff in schools are considered essential, expected to work or be on call through the closure period. We have provided all of our staff with work activities that will benefit the school department in themselves that can be done either at home or through social and physical distancing practices in our facilities. Also includes a lot of professional development that can be done online or through materials that are mailed home. The final piece of the plan is the adjustment to the end of the school year calendar. So what we're looking at having done is on Friday, June 5th, will be the final day of remote instruction for students. Final day of formal remote instruction for students. From Saturday, June 6th, through Wednesday, June 11th, at E H S and H C T C will be opportunities for standards recovery for students. Monday, June 8th, and Tuesday, June 9th, will be days for makeup work and teacher office hours. Wednesday, June 10th, through Thursday, June 18th, will be what we call building-level teacher professional days. Those are days that will be formalized and structured by the respective building administrators and their teachers, and will include a variety of activities. It will include standards recovery as necessary, review of standards that may not have been covered or picked up by students because of a variety of reasons, lack of attendance, lack of technology connection. But review of those standards and planning how to address those in the fall of 2020. Finalizing end-of-year reports for students, parents, guardians, and next year's teachers with regard to demonstrated learning and needs for each student. We recognize that remote learning has been a challenge for everybody involved and know that there are going to need to be supports in place when we move forward to next year. Also included in those days will be placement decisions and discussions for teachers' grades K through eight. As students are moving forward from one grade level to the next, it's important that teachers are able to have conversations upon how students did, what the strengths and challenges are, what areas might need to be focused on in terms of retaining the information from this year. Also scheduling and placement discussions for grades nine through 12, which includes transition of grade eight students to grade nine. Another piece that will be part of those days is a reflection and review of successes and challenges of remote distance learning. Not just to look around and reflect upon what was successful this year and what we had to challenges, but how we might be able to look at those types of things as successes and implement them in restructuring of instructional practice, which is something our Commission of Education is advocating for. And also planning for September 2020. Hopefully, that will be starting out the year in September back in our classrooms, but certainly these conversations on what would happen if we had a continuation of remote learning. And specific to CTE, discussing how we can administer the CTE certification exams. Again, that is a quick overview of the plan, as quick as I could make it, Mrs. Thomas. And so I'd certainly turn it back over to the board for any questions, and certainly would invite any of our administrators here to answer questions that people may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mrs. Thomas, before you entertain a motion, could I just say I want to give credit again to all of our administrators and all of our teachers for the work that they've done, not just to get a remote learning program up and running and to modify it as we move forward to address the challenges, but also in putting together a very detailed and thoughtful plan that will carry us through the balance of this.
Thank you. I'll make a motion if we're ready.
I'm waiting. Paul, do you have any questions that came across?
There have been no new questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Ellsworth School Department Remote Learning Plan for 2019, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to clarify for everybody at home, this plan is just for the remainder of this school year, correct?
Yes, it's for the remainder of this school year, and I'll just say on an optimistic note, hopefully, we don't have to put together a remote learning plan for the beginning of next year, but yes, for the balance of this year.
And a question just came in on this item from Jen Legassi. Will those teacher days be done remotely?
That's a question we've gotten from a couple of other teachers, and I had a conversation with the association president. The answer is yes. Although we do have a number of staff members who, as long as they're adhering to the proper social and physical distancing practices that we have in place, who like to do some of that work in the school, but the answer is yes. And I think we would count on our building administrators to work with teachers in those specific grade spans to specify how that work is going to be done. But certainly, we are going to recognize the fact that we are still under the stay safer-at-home order now, I guess is the new term, and we'll still abide by all those precautions, and if that includes working remotely from home, absolutely.
Any further questions?
No, I don't see any other further ones.
Thank you. Can we ready to vote? Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Abby Miller?
Yes.
Rob Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Paul Markosian?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So we've approved the Remote Learning Plan for 2019, 2020.
Thank you very much, and just for everyone to know that once the minutes from this meeting are approved, we will submit those to the Department of Education as we're required to do, and that will officially put the waiver of days in place and allow that end-of-year schedule to take place. So thank you very much for consideration and approval.
Thank you. Item I three is to move into executive session. I do not have the date for the next regular school meeting down here, so.
I do.
Oh, good.
Next regular school meeting will be on Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. And given the orders that were put in place today, we will be doing it by Zoom once again.
Okay.
And I believe also we would schedule a board workshop also by Zoom. And I believe also we would schedule a board workshop, also by Zoom, for Tuesday, May 26, at 6 o'clock.
Thank you very much. Okay, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I second that motion.
I didn't, I've got to have a motion first.
I'll make a motion that we move into executive session. I'll second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Thomas, before you vote and go into executive session, my understanding is through our IT director that we're going to go into executive session. This meeting is going to be paused, so to speak, because executive sessions have to be confidential for the protection of the people who are involved. We will go to that separate meeting, and then we'll come back here where you will take any action. And Mrs. Clifford, I'm hoping I'm saying that properly.
Mr. Higgins, right away.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, voting on going into executive session. Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Abby Miller?
Yes.
Rob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Markosian?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so 5 oh.
Time, is it, Mr. Markosian?
Seven twenty-two.